I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could take a moment of silence and in your moment of silence, as you can remember, the Tao family, please. Mitch Tao was the past president of the board and served us for many, many years. Can you describe it with the costume?
Gladly, you and the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, made visible, liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Topics of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all school, all district schools. This is Dr. Francisco Volkl.
This is Romeo.
Here.
This is Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Conflin.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Garino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Ofshinsky.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Dr. Anamon.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our rescheduled September meeting. I've already made a note, if we have any future meetings here at Mac Pen, that we'll bring a larger flag, the flag salute, so don't worry about that, it won't happen again. Just a brief superintendent's update tonight, our enrollment this year, student enrollment for this year is, has increased by about 20 students. This reverses about a 30-year trend of student enrollment, declining enrollment in the district year over year for about 30 years. About 30 years ago, the early 90s approximately, when our graduating seniors became larger than our incoming kindergartners, that trend continued throughout the late 90s and into the 2000s, the 2010s. So every year, we'd graduate more 12th graders than we would take in kindergartners, and the net loss every year was anywhere from 20 to 80 students, year over year over year. So this year, it's only one year, it's not a trend, but it's something we're happy about and will certainly keep an eye on moving forward. Our strategic planning update, we have our first meeting right back here Thursday night, the 30th, at 7 o'clock here. We're going to partner with New Jersey School Boards to facilitate the strategic planning meeting, as well as with the members of the school community, members of the township. So we're looking forward to that. Went back into my notes, this was originally scheduled for our last strategic plan with 2015 to 2020. This was originally going to be a 2020 to 25 strategic plan, it was scheduled for March, April, May of 2020. And I did go back and check my notes, this was, that was the first event we canceled in March of 2020. So here we are a year and a half later, and we're looking to craft a 2021, the 26th, five-year strategic plan. And we hope to see you back here Thursday night at 7 o'clock. Before we move on to the social emotional learn update, I just want to give you a brief end of September COVID update. I'm sure you've seen the articles in the newspaper, you get the daily reminders home. But just to give you a brief update at West Milford High School only, these are, because that seems to be where the largest portion of the problem is, about high school students. On September 13th, when we first identified this cohort, we had 54 positive cases at the high school. Of those 54, 29 students have already returned to school because they're outside their window now, 25 remain out. In addition to the 25 that are still out, we have 21 students that are, have been identified as close contacts that are still out of school. So right now, we have 46 students who are out of school, not including the regular daily absences here or there. And again, just a reminder, close contacts are only identified or asked to quarantine if they're not fully vaccinated. Fully vaccinated students are not asked to quarantine, they remain in school. That's that. We do do contact tracing for every case. Dr. McQuaid worked with our principals and their pandemic response teams. They're in constant communication with the Health Department, the County Health Department, just yesterday, the State Health Department as well. So we speak to them every day, every time we have a case to report, we speak with one of those groups, County Health Department, or State Health Department, or in some case, both of them. We have limited in-school transmission, hard to say there's never any in-school transmission, it's difficult to say that, so there's always going to be maybe a small amount, but we believe it's very limited in-school transmission. We know that there are some out-of-school events that we have very little control over that have led to someone getting threatened. So we have made adjustments at the high school cafeteria level, they've separated desks, lunch tables, a lot more than they used to. So we believe that will help, because the cafeteria is the only place where the students are not wearing masks. And if they're wearing masks in class, close contacts do not have to quarantine, they'll wear masks though. In cafeteria, it's assumed that nobody's wearing a mask, those are eating and drinking. So we did redo our high school cafeteria, it should look something like this with student desks and chairs, similar to what we had last year. And starting this year, we went back to our regular lunch tables, and we felt that just was the proper course of action, so we did adjust that about a week ago. So it seems to have slowed down, but we'll certainly keep work in the loop, and we'll certainly communicate with all of our stakeholders moving forward. Dr. McQuaid, we've discussed social emotional learning a lot over the summer, we know that in addition to academic support, we know our students, in some cases, staff needs some social and emotional learning support. So how we, how can we help our students this year in this area?
So we did want to just talk about it a little bit today, tonight of the meeting. As you know, I know for a fact that this board takes social emotional well-being very seriously. You as a board did create a district goal for 2021, and then obviously that is carried temporarily through into this year, to build the district's support system for students and staff with the purpose of social emotional well-being. So our schools have been aggressively going after this and making sure that it's a priority for them. As you know, as the board members and for the community, social emotional well-being, especially with dealing with the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic back into full in-person learning, has affected students, staff in the area, in this area significantly. So I think we all pretty much know that. The social emotional learning process that we're talking about is developing those skills for students in the areas of self-awareness, self-control, interpersonal skills, and all of those areas are vital for this new concept in school. We all know that that then affects these students as far as academic performance, healthy relationships, and overall their mental health and their well-being. So that being said, what are we doing in West Milford? Some of the things I will first just talk about more on the level of reacting to students that might be in crisis or need, we did create crisis teams, we do have, we reviewed our risk assessment procedure, we have teams that are starting in committees, that started with principals this summer, they're coming into this school year with certain goals that they want to achieve. So for instance, I'll give you one example, at the middle school level, we talked about looking more about how we screen children, right? And are we actually, are we only getting those students that are referred to us, but what else can we do, be doing proactively across an entire grade level and across entire school? So that group of mental health providers is going to meet this year and really take a look, you know, dig deeper. Because a lot of times, what we do is, when you set too many goals, then you can't achieve them, right? So we really had the principals this summer come up with, what specifically for your building do you feel we need to accomplish? And then Dr. Anamon, Mr. Novak, and myself will then check in with them and actually see if we're meeting those goals that we set in this summer. Another area is, and I think most of the board is aware, we have applied for the grant to apply mental health towards increasing a staff member or a social worker or a psychologist, and we anticipate that that person would be running groups and some evidence-based practices that then we can translate to the building so that it sustains over time. So right now, we have someone that's hopefully going to be able to come through, a contracted vendor, where that person will then start that several days per week, and we make sure that we affect the whole district, so that eventually throughout the school year, will touch the whole, whole district as a whole. I did recently apply, Dr. Anamon, and hopefully find out this week if we were accepted, to the New Jersey Department of Education Dreams Program. So that is a program that is free from the Department of Ed, allows us to receive training and nurtured heart approach, allows us to have two staff that become certified, also promotes evidence-based strategies, trauma foundation training series, et cetera, et cetera. So we're hoping that we get accepted into that, and then we can be a part of that program, and eventually that will obviously go into the entire district as well. Right now, we targeted in our application that we would start it at the elementary level. Many of you also are aware that in addition to all of this, we already do our individual group counseling, we're adding more targeted groups, you approve to social worker intern who's working with us this school year, we're hoping on the October agenda to put on a psychologist intern, so that we can just expand and be able to provide more than what we've been doing in the past. The other things that are happening, as far as lessons in the classroom that I think are important, one, I just want to announce that next week is the Week of Respect. So some of those, and I'm just going to pull it up so that I make sure that I have it all correct, but on Monday, for instance, is United We Stand in Bullying, so students are encouraged to wear black and gold, there'll be lessons going on in the classroom. Some of the other topics are Team Up Against Bullying, on Tuesday, where you wear a team shirt, again, activities going on in the classroom. Wednesday, Be Comfortable With Yourself, students are encouraged to wear more comfortable clothing. Thursday, Let's Keep the Peace, and Friday, Mental Health Awareness Day. Again, activities and lessons happening with that. Adding up to that, Red Ribbon Week will be in October, I hope to have an update for the board on that as to what we will be doing in October. And the main thing I want to say throughout our school, and this is where I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Novak, is that I think it's important to know that our district, and we're proud of the fact that we have character education lessons going on, anti-bullying lessons going on, digital citizenship lessons going on, all of those things, we also use adventure, part of adventure-based learning, lessons that we've met on and expanded going on in our classrooms as well. So we don't just try to target this mental health wellness and social emotional learning in one area, we try to put it to be systemic across the whole district. So Mr. Novak, would you mind just adding a little bit more to that?
I don't have a lot to add, you did a great job. So our Project Adventure program has been the backbone of many of our initiatives for, you know, many years, going back to, I'm going to say back to 2010, 2011, when we first brought it in. You can see it representative in this room. Last time I mentioned this, we were in a room that didn't happen to have it at that time, but you know, we are in Mac Pen, if you take a look at the, you know, be here, be safe, be honest, be respectful, set goals, let go and move on. It's a common language that you can find in every school, in every classroom across the district, and our staff have been trained in that common language, and it's more than just a common language, it's also lessons and activities that help support that. So in Project Adventure, which is typically a, it begins in the physical education classroom, and then it gets followed through on in our, in our regular classrooms, where the students interact in an activity that fosters many of the skills that Dr. McQuaid was just highlighting, interpersonal skills, problem-solving, team-building, those types of things. They complete a challenge or an activity together, and they have the opportunity to go back in what they call debrief, and they do the debrief sometimes when they're still in the Project Adventure or Phys Ed period, or when they go back into the classroom just to kind of talk things through. More recently, you know, we, we first began with Project Adventure, we took it from a point of view of character ed, character building, but it is a SEL-approved program, which we've really been, in the last number of years, not, and it wasn't in reaction to the pandemic and COVID, we started to build in a lot of the social, social and emotional components of Project Adventure prior to the pandemic. So we were perfectly positioned to, you know, capitalize on the structures that we already have here in place. As Dr. McQuaid mentioned, with the Reck of Respect and some of the other activities coming up, these are things that have been embedded in West Milford schools for years, and our staff are well-trained in how to, along with Project Adventure, you mentioned digital citizenship, we adopted a digital citizenship curriculum in 2015, we were congressionally recognized for that, that this room was the birthplace of the Digital Citizenship Night Event, which was, you know, really brought in a lot of people to, you know, to talk about these, you know, character ed and social emotional aspects, and how they relate to kids and their, and their devices, and their online interactions. So we got a lot of things in place that are just, you know, things we've been doing, and now we've, you know, as Dr. McQuaid mentioned earlier, really a recommitted effort to making sure that we're focusing on it, especially in the early going, and using it to engage those kids who haven't been in a normal, in a normal environment in school in a number of years.
What is Red Ribbon?
What is Red Ribbon?
So it's basically, you have an awareness week, and then there's, and I'm sure this will be open that way, but basically the, the overarching theme of the week, but then there's different activities that usually, if you're a social worker, there's a club provider, so vice versa, but then depending on the grade level, approach that topic. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. McQuaid, thank you, Mr. Novak. We're excited about this goal this year, and we're looking forward to some more updates here for the board and for the community. Don't believe we have a street update tonight from Mrs. Weiss, but I would like to thank Winston for the new wireless microphones, they finally came in, I believe they're working well. Sure we'll hear them tomorrow from the community if they hear us loud and clear, but they're certainly cleaner look, and we don't have to share microphones anymore, so it took a while, supply chain backed up and whatnot, but they're here to stay, so we're happy.
And thanks to Joey Jordan too, for doing some of the research to get that done.
Mrs. Burns also, did a lot of research for us, I should have mentioned them as well. They both dug into their technical background to see which types of microphones work best for a school district without paying for things that we didn't, you know, economical, but it's very effective. Thank you to everybody, and I'm glad we caught you guys.
Mr. Novak, do you have anything to add to this board?
I do. So continuing on with some of Dr. McQuaid's themes and things we're doing for students in the beginning of the school year, knowing that we're coming back to a, a year where a number of our kids were, you know, either at home in a virtual environment, or in a hybrid learning environment, part home, part here, following a 2020 spring where they were home entirely, and you know, we were at the world trying to figure out quickly how to do virtual learning. So we know that there's missing pieces in, in some of the learning experiences that our students had. So one of the things we've been talking about since last February is about how do we handle and how do we take the early fall of this year to assess where our kids are at, assess them up against the state standards for the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, of what their expectations are at this time, and for our ability to identify those weaknesses and then have a plan in place to work with them. Through grants and Board of Education support with local funds, we've been able to really boost our support structures for, you know, our hands-on deck with our, we call it, in district, we call it our encore positions, you know, the districts might be called a basic skills or academic support programs, that sort of thing. So we boosted staff and personnel, and then with that, we've also been able to schedule our fall assessments in a systematic way so that we can get, one, we can get our kids into the school year throughout a whole month of September without having to sit down and take an assessment on the first day of school. They were able to come in and get acquainted and focus on some of the social emotional learning things that we, we found to be the most important piece of returning, was to get everyone back in school and acquainted to, you know, the school environment. And now we're at the stage where we're going to be looking at some of these assessments. One of the assessments began this week, began yesterday, that is our Linkit Benchmark Assessment. Linkit Benchmark Assessment is administered in grades for English, Spanish, and Arts, it's administered in grades two through 11, and for math, it is administered in grades two through, two through eight, and then at the high school, we give it to students for Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. So throughout that process, it doesn't take, at most, it would take two class periods, you can, you can get it accomplished in one period, sometimes, so the kids aren't rushed, the teachers will schedule two days and they'll, you know, do half the test on the first day, pause it, and then the kids will continue on the second day. So that assessment is based upon the standards of the grade level that they're, they should know at this point in time in the school year. So it's not, you're a third grader, you're not being assessed on end of third grade standards, you're assessed on all the standards leading up to this point in, in third grade. So that is a process that we have in place, we will be completing with that this week. We get our results from that in a matter of weeks from the Linkit, the Linkit vendor, the data warehousing company, and we hope to have them to our staff at the end of October to act on, and then to our families at parent-teacher conferences in November. The other assessment is a state assessment that is required this year, it's called Start Strong. The Start Strong Assessment is something that we, we chose to administer last year in West Milford that was optional. I was very proud of the fact that we were able to implement it. A lot of districts set off last year with a goal to try and implement it, but then as the year went on, it became too challenging for whatever reason, and West Milford ended up being one of the, one of the few districts statewide who actually implemented Start Strong, which is now required of every district in the state of New Jersey. So we've, we have familiarity with it, it is something that we were able to implement without, you know, without a whole lot of disruption. We've actually been a district that is getting reached out to by districts who are implementing it for the first time, asking us how we did it, what were the, what were the, you know, bugs in the process and that sort of thing. That is a, an assessment that is also administered in grades two through 11, and ELA in math. Similar, similar groups in, in high school with Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. There's also a science component to Start Strong, which is different than what we have in Linkit. Those results come back relatively quickly as well, so we are anticipating sharing those results also at our parent-teacher, parent-teacher conferences. The Linkit results give us a lot more data than the Start Strong Assessment. Our Strong Assessment gives us, you know, a student rating for how they are compared to state standards, which is similar to Linkit. But Linkit will give us a breakdown of every standard at the grade level that a student was questioned on, and how they, how they perform. So with that, and I'm sorry, I'm talking a lot about, you know, the logistics of the assessment, from that data, our support team, our staff, everyone who's working with our students are able to better, better direct their instruction, better plan goals and objectives for our students, and truly differentiate our needs. We've had plenty of meetings with our staff about, you know, there's a expectation you had in the, you know, at the start of the 2019, 2020 school year, that might be a little bit different now based on the information that we get. So it's our intention to, you know, maintain on-grade level instruction, I'm not saying we're going to, we're going to step back and, and not teach on-grade level, but we're going to teach the kids where they're at, we're going to, you know, try to remedy some of those bigger things that we've had, some of those bigger standards that we may have missed in. So we'll know more, and then we'll be able to, hopefully, I'll have, be able to share at Ed Committee in November, the results of, also those assessments, and then it goes out to our families at the parent-teacher conferences. Those are parent-teacher conferences are November 22nd and the 23rd. In addition, sorry, one last, one last assessment, one of the ones that I find to be one of the most important happens to be in our kindergarten through fifth grade, which is our Fanta Simpson Penel Benchmark Reading Assessment. This is an assessment to determine the reading level for, for our students of each grade. It's a process we've been doing for many years, we've had some challenges last year to try and administer this assessment, the student is not physically with us, so this year's assessment we, we find to be very, very important, where you are focusing a lot of our resources to making sure, you know, maintain the fidelity of that assessment. The board has supported substitute teachers, permanent sub in every, every building, every school in West Milford. That sub is going to help support coverage for giving the benchmark assessment, which takes a lot of time for each individual kid, especially in the kindergarten and first grade classroom where the rest of the kids might, might not be ready for some independent work at this point in the year. So the board has supported, you know, the teacher support that's required to administer that, and we're in the process of gathering that information. And that is, this is my.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. I want to thank Barbara too, for the mic, for the Lincoln Board, we put a lot of work and time into it, we had a ton of money too. And the nice thing is that I can see you now. That big monster is gone, so it's good to see. Barbara, the.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you great now. The minutes?
Yes, we have the minutes from the August 24th meeting, the regular workshop and executive session.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th.
Wow, that's amazing.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me? August 24th workshop, regular meeting, and the August 24th executive session.
Second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? If not, all over the favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Under my president's report, I, I was just going to piggyback on to what Dr. Anamon said about the strategic planning meeting, this is very essential for our district so that we can see where we're heading. If you can't make the meeting, which is okay, because if we don't have a quorum, then we don't actually have to open it as a meeting, but if you could all let us know, maybe by the end of tonight, if you are coming, so that we can prepare, knowing that the board members will be there. Again, this is really for the community, so as board members, we're here, we'll be attending, but we will be there in a listening mode and not really contributing. From what I understand from Kathy, the most important thing is that the public and all of the stakeholders have a chance to give their input. So if you're going to make it and you know you're coming, please let us know, and the one thing that they ask is that you don't come after it starts, because then we would have to stop and open the meeting if we didn't have a quorum to start, okay? And that's about it. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to the members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolution on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during the public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and the life of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone's on them?
Mary Moore.
Mary?
You can push the button, there's a button on the microphone, and it'll turn red.
And it'll turn red.
Got it.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Anamon, Mr. Novak, thank you for your time. My name is Mary Moore. I am a 23-year-plus president of West Milford. I have two sons in the district, age 13 and 16. I'd like to thank you so much for your time. First off, I'd like to start off by thanking Dr. Anamon for revisiting his optional mask policy in the first week of school. That was, you know, something that we were kind of questioning about what was gonna happen given warmer weather. And that was something that was asked, and what we were told, those of us who did ask, is that it's going to be treated in much the same manner as our snow day, that it would be considered on the basis of the individual day and the weather that is observed on that day. Of course, there was much distress when it was announced for the entire week that it was going to be made optional. But upon hindsight and actual observation of whether it was revised, and therefore, it was made safe for all students of West Milford. So I do thank you for that, and I hope as we move forward, we will see that same policy take place where it is evaluated on the basis of each individual day, much like our snow days. I think that the big news was, you know, in the high school, we saw this outbreak happen. And it has been on many people's minds since this has happened and what's been going on since then. You know, we see a lot of it stemming from outdoor activities and things outside of the school where people were unmasked. And we know that that's the main cause. However, we'd be naive to believe that it's not happening within our own schools. And we must be vigilant as we move forward, especially, we're headed into the winter. We know kids get sicker in the winter. We stay inside a lot more, we're more confined. And also, we know that there are individuals that still don't wear their masks properly, and we have to constantly remind them, to push them up over their noses or mouths. And there are even individuals who are trying to circumvent the mandate by wearing what's called fake masks. That's actually what they're called. They're mesh masks that are made to look like they are actual protective face coverings, but they do nothing. It just gives the appearance of it. It's because of these reasons and many others that we must stay vigilant and protect our children. You know, we had many, many studies come out in the past few months, but particularly last week. Arizona State University released a study regarding their Maricopa and their Pima County schools. And they found that, they did a comparison of those that had mask mandates and those that didn't. And the ones that did not were three and a half times more likely to have outbreaks. In fact, some of those school districts did have to close temporarily because of the number of people who got sick from outbreaks from COVID. Also, Johns Hopkins released a study on the 24th of this month that basically stated that, they did a study of 520 districts in the U.S. That evaluate whether or not the mask mandate really helped or did nothing. And what they found was, schools that did not follow a universal mask mandate had significantly higher increases of pediatric COVID cases than those that had mask requirements. And in some weeks that those observations were made, they saw that the incidence of pediatric cases more than doubled those that actually did follow one. So I think the science very clearly accredited, true science really shows that the mask mandate does help. I mean, from the time we're little, we're told to cover our noses, cover our mouths when we sneeze and cough. Why? We don't want to spittle on people. We don't want mucus flying everywhere. This is another protective layer, and that's what it is all about. Protective layers along with sanitizing and cleaning. This has been a circus with regards to the masking. There's a mandate in place, and we need to follow it so we can keep our kids safe and keep them in school and in person. And we need to readjust the focus on the academic performance of our kids. Our kids last year, they suffered from being home virtually. I know my boys struggled with math and science and some of the other course subjects. They worked really, really hard, but I know that they are not as strong as they used to be in math. And that's going to hurt them when they do the assessments this year. We need to refocus ourselves and really help these kids that are struggling because they haven't been with their teachers one-on-one. And I'm so pleased to hear that there are things being done within the district to address that and to get our kids up to speed and to see those assessment scores go up, so it benefits our district as a whole. You know, it really is, you know, nobody likes wearing a mask all the time. I don't. You know, but I do it because I'm not willing to gamble my life, my family's life, with the people around me, their lives, because we don't know how this virus is going to affect one person versus another. I'm not willing to gamble it. So let's keep everybody safe, and let's keep everybody in person in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing none, I make a motion to close public comment.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
I want to have one edit to the agenda tonight before we adopt it. It's on page five, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 11. We're going to pull it and replace it with hand-carried Personnel Resolution Number 11. So there's a change in dates there from the leave, in the leave. So we'll pull the one on the regular agenda, Personnel Number 11. Replace it with hand-carried Resolution Number 11. And that's it.
There is a hand carry, there is more hand carries. Personnel added.
Yes, so, well.
You're just adding them on, right?
These, these hand carries are all on the agenda. These have been added, but this one is just replacing one.
We have one that's a replacement.
Okay.
For an existing resolution. And the other one is a hand carry.
Okay.
And then we have one hand carry which will be voted on after executive session.
We have an executive session after.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Education, Mrs. Dwyer?
I'd like to move. I'd like to move items one through eight for approval.
Second. Discussion? Anyone have a discussion on the items under Education? Not. Francisco Volco?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman? Mr. Ofschinsky? Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Personnel, Student Affairs, Davidson?
I'd like to move in item one through 10 and 12 through 14. Hand-carried Number 2, for the 11th. And hand-carried Number 3, 35 through 39.
Second. Any discussion under Personnel? Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay, I noticed that, uh, where is it? Okay, on number three, the, okay, the, um, media specialist is out from September 1st through December 31st. And then her replacement, Number 9, is only in until November. So what's happening for the month of December for the media center?
We'll have to find a new replacement for that. So she didn't start until the 22nd, which is why there's no coverage from September 1st through September 21st. But we'll have somebody new. Though we are limited at times for keeping a person in a cell two conditions for laws in a certain school group. We'll have to fill that from November 20th through the end of the conference.
Item Number 24, why is there an increase in the day for that individual?
Well, this is to help with a lot of the paperwork we have to do at the high school. Some of it connected to contact tracing. We've just been in abundance of that this year. We feel though adding an hour to his day helps out the main office staff, helps out the administration. It's another set of hands for an extra hour a day. Plus, we also have our usual starting of school year, paperwork avalanche, course changes, just all the little things. It helps out a lot, a lot of that.
And he, is he certified to help out with the course changes?
Well, not so much work changing the courses, but just helping out getting kids down to the main office. Just helping out with some of the, a lot of the, a lot of the actions.
Can I have one more? I don't know if it's a question or a statement. On Number 28, we spoke about a committee to build pride in the school. I really believe that the high schools should be a stellar example to the community. And I'm concerned that there are so few high school teachers on that committee. Why?
These were the volunteers that we received. Mr. Trent Acosta invited a large number of people, and this is who we got.
So many elementary. I mean, I, I really think because our high school needs to be highlighted, that we should try to get more high school teachers involved. We need to attract kids back into the district who have left us. And I think that's where we're gonna do it. One of the only.
It's about half, it's about half high school.
It's a really, it doesn't look like a high school. I don't know, it didn't look like it today. And I want to see more done for the high school. Thank you.
Any other discussion under Personnel? Not, I'm sorry. On Number 34, for those volunteers, are, do we insure them?
If something happens to them, do we give them insurance?
If they're, if they're injured?
No. If, if, if they're, if you have a coach or a teacher, they're insured by our district, are these volunteers carrying the same insurance?
Well, it's approved by the board so that it would be covered under your umbrella.
Yeah. The board approves, is our employee really covered by our umbrella. Pretty comprehensive.
Any other questions? Questions? Not. Volco?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Operations and Finance, Dr. Ofschinsky?
I'd like to move items one through five under Operations and Finance.
Second. Discussion? Anyone have any questions on the items on, under Operations and Finance? Not, order?
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Do you want to address a question?
I do. Do we have enough Chromebooks? Do we have enough Chromebooks now, or are we still waiting on them?
Yeah, the role here, the role delivered should have, should have caught up.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. I'm gonna get you a buzzer, please, because I don't. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'd like to move item number six from Drop率.
Any discussion? Order?
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Yep.
Mrs. Stevenson? Mr. Guarino?
Stand.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo? Mrs. Van Dyke?
Stand.
I'd like to move items seven through 12, where you can find out.
Second. Discussion? Not? Volco?
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 13, the hand-carried.
I think we're gonna do that after executive session.
Okay.
I mean, executive session for that one. Policy, Mrs. Romeo?
I'd like to, I have never one for your testimony, policy?
Second. Discussion? Anyone? Not, Volco?
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, we're going into our committee reports. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Stillman or Mr. Guarino? Your report? Safety, do we have a meeting table?
I'll check with Mrs. Still.
Report, um, roundtable. We had a superintendent's roundtable on Thursday, the 23rd. And it was discussed about the Chromebooks. It was discussed about the new messenger system, which I think people got a message on tonight and will get a message tomorrow morning about logging on to be able to get text messages. They talked about the intervention specialist, the graduation rate requirement, and the different, the differences between the lunches in the different buildings. I'm not sure when our next meeting is next month. You have a question?
I bet people did talk about the different lunches.
They talked about how if the lunches were different in the different buildings, there was something that came up about that, right?
Were they talking more about the spending?
Yes.
Yes.
Food offered, food served, there was a little discussion. So it is the same at all six elementary schools. Services, the food offered at the African High School is not the same as the elementary. More option. For example, at the high school, we used to have, you know, pre-pandemic, a cold sandwich station where students could order custom sandwich, exactly how they liked it. So this year, we have pre-wrapped sandwiches, turkey, cheese, lettuce, and you get a managed packet on your own. If you don't like the lettuce in the sandwich ready yet, just take it off. Not a custom, pre-wrapped sandwich. So it's a nice little hybrid, better than we had last year, not as good as we had two years ago. So we're sort of working our way back to a full cafeteria offering. We're not quite there yet. Covid.
Who's trying not to can?
People, keeping the line moving.
Do you ladies, do we want for, like, they want to, like, talk more?
Not, not necessarily. There's supply chain issues with food also, but they also want to minimize the waste. So they, they need to start slow in order to create an option. But we have more options in the middle school and the high school because there's more students. Yes, the, if Novak can speak on that, because we both on it at the roundtable.
So there was a question on the agenda from the Wampa group about the, are we gonna have intervention specialists this year as we have in the past? So traditionally, let's give you a little background. The intervention specialist position was a support position that we provided for schools that receive Title I assistance. Schools qualify for Title I assistance. I would use Title I funding to support their encore program with the presence of a intervention specialist, which was the position. This year, we have used title fund. This year, we have used title funds in collaboration with ESSER funds, the Covid relief funds, to add additional full-time encore people or half-time encore people to all of our schools. So the short answer is no, we will not have intervention specialists this year. The real answer is that we're not missing the support. We've gone above and beyond what that support was. So the title intervention specialist was like a daily, a daily paid person at a sub-rate. We now have people on guide, on the teacher's guide, you know, in a full-time, in a full-time role. They participate in the school, they come to the, you know, the school nights and parent-teacher conferences, all those types of things. So it's a more substantial role than what we had in the past for intervention.
State County School Board. Haven't heard anything, haven't been invited to anywhere. I'm sitting home, just reading policy. So now you're nothing, I'm serious, I'm serious. No, we haven't received anything yet. I don't know what's. They usually do something in September, from my understanding, right? Beginning of the year, they usually had kickoff.
They maybe do virtual.
Oh, that's probably.
They even do a virtual.
I didn't get anything on it. And we all should get it. And if we're not on it, everyone should have the chance. New Jersey School Board, the, the next thing would be the strategic planning that we're going to be working, having there's, you know, the three days. And hopefully it will be well, well-intended and move forward. Legislative?
I have no report.
Technology?
All right, so we're using one of the pieces that we spoke about, which is nice. The security camera project in the high school was completed. So that's good. I think the high school staff, there's a couple of people that do that, right? They've been trained already. The other thing is with regard to school messenger, we've got, just like you mentioned, Linda, we've got all that information. Probably the biggest thing that we spent the most amount of time on was the website, right? And what we want to do with the website and really just kind of look at a ground-up approach in making some big changes for the public, for us as board members, for everybody to be able to have a much easier time using that. Our West Milford Board of Education website is, I consider, less than friendly. So the key is so many people are using, we talked specifically, right? So many people use these devices as their computer now. And legitimately, they're doing everything on the phone. You can't even get, like, to see our website on the phone is very difficult. So the ground-up approach is, is in its infancy stage, it's going to take some time. But I do think that we'll make progress as the year goes on. It's a, it's a big task, but absolutely important for all of us. And, and the thing that I just kind of threw out there was like, we just need to, that KIS technique, and we need to keep it simple, right? The front page needs to remain simple. It shouldn't be more than a couple clicks to get to something. If I'm a parent, it shouldn't be more than a couple clicks to get to something for my student. If I'm a student and I need to find information, I should be able to get to it quickly. And more importantly, right, for people outside of our community that might be looking to move, Alex talked about, yeah, not, it's not a trend, but we're hoping that it becomes a trend where people with younger children move to the community. You know, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, this also is a benefit to people as they research moving to the township of West Milford too, and what our school systems are like still. More to come on that. And then we talked about the Chromebooks. So I do think there was, you know, an issue with Chromebooks. Some of it was related to shipping issues. I think obviously we have ship issues. But I also think that it took too long, even with those shipping issues. I just need to get better information from the group next time. So let's just be more accurate. I would rather have you as, have Robert, you know, under-promise and over-deliver next time. Because some of these students went through almost three weeks without Chromebooks. So that's, that's tough, right? When a lot of what we do now is, is, is in, on that Chromebook, so that's important. But everybody's got them now, so everybody should be happy that we've got those Chromebooks.
Do all the grade levels have them now?
So it was, it was my understanding as of yesterday, right? Even the 10th graders, do you have those now?
Well, the sixth grade went out probably Thursday, Friday, but.
Right.
The 10th grade went out yesterday.
Right. So.
There was something in there about the kindergarten and first grade? Are they, they will have them?
Yes, yes. So we did talk about, like, K1, they're in the classroom, right? So second grade on, they're carrying those Chromebooks home each day. We talked about some of the different things that we, we might do in the classroom, whether they're going to remain on carts or stored somehow in the classroom. So it's easier for, for the staff to kind of get those out and get those to students quickly. But I think that the feeling is we just don't want kindergarten first graders quite yet bringing those back and forth every day, right?
They did last year, I'm not going to round the place.
Yeah. Right, so now that we're in full day, I think some of the discussions were, we're in full day learning, where before we had that hybrid learning all of last year, it kind of made more sense for them to bring those home. Now, like, we can house them in the classroom. It helps us kind of preserve the, those Chromebooks for better use.
Very, very limited homework for the kindergarten first grade group. It would be bicycle. I'll just jump in on the Chromebook as well. So one of the other things you can anticipate, depending on, we're still waiting for feedback from real time, whether we can do it Friday or not. We are anticipating sharing with the community, the Chromebook parent agreement. So I, I think it's important, thank you for bringing it up, to, to inform the community of this agreement before it goes out. It is going to be part of the parent questions on the parent portal. We will send a message, a school messenger notification, that when the, when the question is available. And the question on the parent portal will be very simple. You know, have you read the parent Chromebook agreement? And do you agree with it? There'll be a link there to the document. We can provide paper document, you know, paper copy of the agreement if families want it. We will go live with it relatively soon. Once it is live, we anticipate giving families a, probably about a four-week period of time to review and respond, whether they agree with, you know, whether they are consenting to the agreement or not. At that time, at the end of the four weeks, we will send out another notification, letting everyone know that a non-response is a form of agreement. And give people at that point in time the opportunity to say, well, I just missed it, I don't agree, and that sort of thing. So we're going to give a reasonable amount of time for people to review the agreement. And then let us, you know, let us know, you know, their thoughts on that. Well, that process is coming soon. And it's a, you know, basic user agreement, along with our acceptable use policy, that you're, you know, going to treat it with care, you're going to bring it charged whenever you can. And we are, you know, have a process in place for replacement process, that sort of thing. And, you know, we'll share that with you.
So that was, I was going to end with the last two things. That was one thing. No, that's okay. That was one, the other, right? Because I wanted to say it now, in September of 2021. Right, the, what we're looking to do is at the start of next year, right? So in August of 2022, before you can get into that parent portal, you're going to see these things and have to accept these things before you get into the parent portal. And I'm putting that out there now, today, in September. So you all have a year to kind of prepare for that to happen. So, you know, Dan talked about how it's a great idea that all that stuff comes up right before the school year. So all, right, all those things that you have to do as a parent, right? You can accept and fill out any forms that you need to. All of that stuff will be there before school even starts. So that's a great idea.
Just to piggyback on what Ray is saying, you'll get on or about August 15th, before the open, you'll have your, your teacher, if you're an elementary student, you get your teacher on that date. You get your bus pass. If you're a secondary student, maximum high school, you get your schedule. We're going to have it next year to, before you can open the portal, you have to fill these forms out. Commit the deadline. And once you do that, oof, your child's parent portal, student portal, whatever you call it, will open, and you'll see your third grade teacher, your bus stop. This is going to be streamlined, but we don't have all the paperwork coming in the first week of school. So it's just a way to use technology a little bit for our advantage. And I think it's going to be helpful for parents as well. So almost all of these forms can be filled out on your phone quickly. As a parent, my, my own district did this past August, we were looking out, and then we got our schedules.
Another.
A lot of places to do it. It seems to be more and more. It's coming down the pipe from next August. We'll have some more discussions between now and then. It was great discussion, we had a technology committee and a local committee. Look for the last paper.
Yes.
That's it.
Do you have anything else, Ray?
Nope, that's it, thanks.
I think you're going to have a question. Go ahead, Kate.
Um, thank you. We talked about our website. I'm excited to see the ideas of our brand-new website committee. Will the technology oversight committee be working with that?
Yeah, so we talked about, you know, obviously having some key players from the administration, from the Board of Education, parents, maybe even staff, and who knows, maybe even students. Like, we, we want to get that together, right? It's in its infancy, it's going to take some time. But we'll have a, a group of people that will, you know, be able to at least provide information that they feel is important, so we can kind of create the framework for the website.
As time goes on, can you share? I don't expect this thing, but as time goes on, can you share with us, like, the timeline of when that committee is meeting and what their goals are and when they think it will be?
Yeah. We, again, those things will probably start to happen. You know, towards the end of this year, beginning of next year, would be my guess.
I, I would hope that the committee would report back to your committee.
Right.
And then the board would get feedback. But I think if, if there are individual board members who have something that they would like to, you know, contribute, I'm sure you're really, that, you know, we're looking for that, I think, I believe.
So the board actually approved something tonight, was personnel reservation number 25. So we have these names approved. Firstly, we're going to ask our staff members, you know, from the teacher's perspective, what do you want in the website? What do you think of the website? And maybe just as importantly, what don't you need? We'll get some feedback from our staff. I believe they're all members.
The end.
They're all, yeah. Yeah, so we did discuss it on SRT with our county population on Thursday.
And I, and I think some of us, right, we get emails and feedback from parents on, you know, they can't find something, things that they like, things they don't like, where, you know, where they have to go. So I think that some of that feedback, obviously, we, we can funnel to our group also.
We did, and your word of that was a topic that came up after Anima, Anima shared that at roundtable also. The PDAs know, you know, that we're looking for any input that they might have, because we want to make sure that every part of the youth is going to have a, you know, have at least some input. Anything else under technology? If not, the township committee, we don't have anything about, I don't know, working on that thing. West Milford Municipal Line.
September's meeting was canceled, though they have a meeting, I think, a week of, I want to say it's October 13th, I think it's called Columbus Day. Let's see, Jane.
And she, nothing's out clearly. She talked about the national, like, out, and how wonderful this is. She also talked about the not buying it program for sixth grade girls and boys, the high school on the 3rd, and the program for the 3rd and 4th.
Old business? Do you have anything for old business? Your motion then?
So I, I know some of this was, we brought some of this up a little bit earlier, but I thought maybe this would be a good time to talk about myths and rumors and some of those things that have come up with Covid. And some of the things that have been said either online or in person to some of the administration or the board members. So, right, that obviously the biggest question out there is, when you get 54 cases in, in a specific school, how do you keep the school open when the state says that, you know, if you have three cases that can be traced back to the school, that maybe the school should pause for two weeks? So lots of folks in town are kind of asking those questions. I think there's a lot of people in town that were appreciative of us staying open too, right? So you kind of have that 50-50. So, but maybe you can explain why you can still stay open with 54 cases in, in a school?
Well, you discussed this before. Why don't you just share a little bit?
Sure, not a problem. So, I'm sorry, I have to step out for a quick second, but.
Yo, you get the water?
Yeah, I got the water and I have, and I have a lifesaver.
So we, we do meet, I mean, I'll just set her up a little bit, but we do meet with the county health department, the state health department. Every, you know, they, they want to see us taking the stairs, which we are, so they're appreciative of that fact. They think we're doing everything right. We have made change in our school cafeteria since the start of school year. They think it's going to have a major effect. There's very little, we, we find out totally at least, that our, our vaccination numbers at the high school are perhaps lower than we had in the past. So students who were 16 and over were made eligible sometime in the spring, and then 12 and over were made a little later. So we were anticipating higher numbers, and I think we got lower, lower numbers in the high school. We are in the process of collecting vaccination data from our staff now. That's due before October 18th. We're about halfway there. About half of our staff has submitted, half has not. Of the half that have submitted, I believe 95% are fully vaccinated for our staff. So we don't think we're going to have any kind of major outbreak happening. We made a change from last year, because last year there was no vaccine. We don't know vaccine is 100% safe, but we also know it does offer a lot of protection that being, not being vaccinated. Is that, is that right, Liz? And you?
Yes, I mean, that definitely gave a really good summary. The other thing I think that's important for the public to know is that when you have cases as high as ours right now, with the 54 cases coming from the high school, right? As that information is coming into us, we are then immediately excluding, and that's the term that they use, excluding those students from school. And anyone that those students drove with, sat at the lunch table with, those, that whole group is then immediately excluded. So as that's happening over the courses of the past several days or past week, there are multiple students then that are excluded for the timeline. And the purpose that the health department says is you want to then mitigate the risk, right? Stop the spread. So you do that by then isolating and excluding those students. From there, the health department has worked very closely with us because the numbers came in quickly. So we not only then had our team at the high school, but we expanded that, and we, we borrowed a nursery in another building, shifted our staff around. I even had Mr. Novak down, called him over, and we make sure that we work very quickly on that information. So then the health department got involved right away because of the cases coming so quickly, and helped us to confirm our contact tracing, which did, the majority of students were linked to either the football game, which Dr. Anima mentioned in one of his letters, and/or an outside event that happened that same weekend. So what we found, what the health department will see in our tracing, and then they go back and verify, is that. back and verify, is that the students that were at the game or were sitting at tables together or other, when, when in the car and drove together, those were the students that then obviously became positive along the way. The health department then turned it over, the county health department to the state department because of the numbers coming in high, and I know it's high for the community, high for us as well. And then they analyze, what are you doing? They have you reflect, kind of refocus your thinking. What else can we be doing to help mitigate and address the issues? So that's where the community probably noticed that first weekend when that happened, when we found the cases coming in, we limited the spectators at the sports, only left it to immediate family. Our principal, you know, Mr. Striens and Mr. Shudy and Mr. Folero relooked immediately with the custodial staff, how could they redesign lunch to seat students six feet apart? We then started to realize we needed to refocus some of our contact tracing on the carloads, the cars coming back and forth. You guys know Wes Mulford, it's a big town. So they're hitting that 15 minute mark in 24 hours pretty quickly. So anyone that was driving together to a practice, to anything was also included. So I think the main thing to just kind of, for the public to know is that we have been aggressively going after this and making sure that, that it is as controlled as it can be. Are some students going to still feel the residual effects of like a contact of a contact and it keeps going? Yes. We are starting to slowly see the number come down and we would hope that that would continue. But what the epidemiologist and the health department, and I'll say publicly, has said to me is that this is going to be a virus that's going to be here, right? So we have to, in order to preserve, and I think as educators, we want to make sure that students are getting the education that they deserve in person as best we can and as safely as we can. If we ever feel we need to close due to, for a safety purpose, we of course would consider that with the health department. But at this point, they are satisfied with the strategies that we have in place and gave us some suggestions more on this, on the, on the recommendations as far as some communication and making sure that we streamline the process internally, which we're going to take all of their advice that, that they're giving us. So I just want the public to be assured that we are taking all their advice. We have not turned down anything that they have suggested. Um, today they gave, you know, another report and feedback and we'll just continue to do that every day. We've been dialoguing with, like having a dialogue with them.
So, right, so again, dispelling one of those rumors out there was that, that, you know, the health department recommended that we pause for two weeks. You clearly are saying that that's not the case.
That's not the case.
That's important for people to know because I, I just, I just can't stand when there's rumors out there. We just need to make sure that we get the facts out there.
It's, it's difficult for us, as you can imagine, to follow up on every online rumor, Facebook posts and tweets and whatnot. There's a funny meme out there, but the painting of Abraham Lincoln, he says, uh, you can't believe everything you read on the internet. You know, it's a quote attributed to President Lincoln, so it's a joke in there. So we do our best to, you know, deliver the facts to parents in a very straightforward manner with the daily letter that goes out by the clock at night, 5:30, they're about. So if you receive the letter, or excuse me, if you, if you get the letter from the school, from my office, and you have not yet received a call about being in close contact, it means your child was not in close contact. So you'll get the call first from the high school principal, the middle school principal and, you know, whoever, a nurse, assistant principal, you'll get the call first, which is why there's sometimes a delay in getting the letter out. We'd like to have it out by the time, by 5:00. But there are some nights we're making calls till 5:30 and we don't want to send a letter out until every parent is in contact. So if you're receiving the letter at 5:45 in the evening and you've not yet gotten a call from somebody in the full district, your child is not in close contact. So you can rest assured at that point that everybody that needed to be contacted has been contacted. Like I said, while there's a little bit of a delay some days, uh, for certain others, I hope that dispels some or much of it.
I, so I want to make it clear, we were never told that we should put our foot by the health department. And we didn't, not did, because that's what's out there and that's important. We did not go against the health department.
I, I did, I always do it just a generic.
Right, I mean.
I would think we couldn't.
I, I mean, I just want, because that's, that's, that's what you're talking about, right? At the end next, and up to our knowledge as board members, when I've gotten the message, I said, that's not, I mean, like today, we're the only, we're the only case in today's county that, you know, is, is, is a case.
I will, I will also just mention today, um, the health department did ask me to add an additional column to our data that we're providing that also clarified between a PCR test and a rapid. So I think we have to also understand that when the state is analyzing our information, that they also have certain formulas, information that they're also looking at as well, whereas sometimes the number may be high, but in, in their mind when they're analyzing the, you know, number of cases we have or it's linked to, some of them are considered probable and not necessarily confirmed.
I think what you're trying to say though is we want to make sure that the public is, has the confidence in us that we are doing exactly what the health department is telling us.
Correct.
And, and we're meeting everything that we're supposed to do.
And if, if, so if we have a student that, wait, we say has to go out for close contact, right? Is there a period of time where they could come back to school sooner, like if they go get a PCR test?
Yes, so right now, because we're in the moderate zone, which I say that because every Thursday it changes, but we are in the moderate. So I will say that right now, if you're identified as a close contact, we count 10 days from that day. That's without you going for a test. Day one starts the following day. So it starts tomorrow would be one and then you count, you know, from there. Um, you can test on day five, six or seven, which is why it gets confusing. And then if you're negative, you can return on day eight, which we are following, um, as well. But the, the timelines also get tricky because we also have other students that may have been exposed, but they're not necessarily in close contact. So let's say, let's take an elementary school and they happen to be sitting at the table. They were seated over six feet, but the principal will call as a courtesy and allow, you know, the two other kids, because you know, little kids, they might scooch in a little bit. We will let those parents know that their child may have been exposed. They may end up going for a test and be back sooner than maybe day eight. So, but yes, for any close contact, they, they test back at day eight or they're out for 10 days.
Okay, I love any of that. I think that's such a huge courtesy part of our meeting and something that has, has had a lot of interest in. I just wanted to ask what's happening for the students that are quarantined? Are they zooming into their classes? What's the difference between each school or grade level?
On grades six through twelve, uh, six through 12 are students who are quarantined or, or streaming into the classroom, uh, as they did last year in the hybrid model. In grades K through five, um, we didn't have a live streaming model last year. So we're basically just, you know, if you remember what we went through last year, we're using last year's model for those quarantined students. So if you are a student in grades K through five, uh, you're going to have access to Google Classroom activities. You're going to get a morning and afternoon check-in with your, um, with your child, uh, child's teacher. And again, that was another reason why the board supported those subs in the, uh, subs in the elementary schools so that if a teacher does have students on quarantine, that when they're meeting with the quarantine student on Google Meet, that then the sub is in there helping, helping with the students who are there, uh, they're in person. So K-5, they're getting a morning and afternoon check-in with activities provided through Google Classroom. And in grades six, six through 12, they have access to Google Classroom along with a live feed into the room.
How, how quickly does that happen?
So we give, um, we give a day. So let's say, um, Dr. McQuaid calls at home at, um, you know, 8:00 PM Tuesday night. It's reasonable for the educator to have, uh, some notice to prepare these, uh, you know, we don't know these things in advance. Uh, at the high school, it can turn around rather quickly because they are used to just being able to turn on the camera. In the elementary school, as many of you know, um, you know, living, living the role of a second grade or first grade teacher, needs a little time to prepare some of these activities, not knowing that they were going to have a student on quarantine. So in K-5, um, the first day of the quarantine, maybe a Google, um, Google Classroom activity provided by the end of that day and the check-ins will begin on the second day of that, uh, process. Just give the educator the time to prepare and, and the check-in can start the next day. Some of them do. We don't, we're not asking them, requiring to do that. We're, we're asking them to, um, you know, be prepared for day two. But I know many of them jump right in, you know, the teachers are very, very caring and, and, you know, seasoned from last year and how this goes. So even if they don't have the materials prepared just yet, they are jumping on with the check-in and just making sure those kids are okay and maintained to be part of the class. A lot of them go, like, we're requiring the check-ins, a lot of them are going above and beyond, um, hopefully passed.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, um, after talking about the website. I wanted to say there's been a lot of talk over the last two years about our branding and our communication and our district, you know, our highlander district. And, um, I really think that all of those things and all those goals come together. We plan the website and now, um, throughout this year, that each of those things, they really go together. They have different components, they have different goals and, you know, to meet and whatever, but I'm really hoping that all of that comes together at once and aren't just a website. And then we work on branding another time. Like each of those things should really be focused on this year. And I just wanted to make that comment because I think that they could all roll out together really nicely and they're all related.
I think that some of what you just said may be part of the topic to come out on Thursday night.
Wonderful. So there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business?
Make a motion to close all business.
A second.
All those in favor? May you close? New business? Anyone have anything?
Make a motion to close the business.
All those in favor? May you close? Okay, public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to the members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and directly related to the operation of the Wes Mulford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized at the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes and then time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes, your speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give your full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide your address. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals in this meeting. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will respond, will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them as opposed to the jury. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and fight against the legal rights of those affected or identifying their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak, uh, during public comment?
Seeing none, I make a motion to close public comment.
All those in favor? May you close? Okay, we need a motion. We want to make an executive session, the district of the session, there's no alternative to the nation's current situation, that those who have a condition, matters in the current environment. Okay. We have that, I'm going to, so now we need to address, and the public's comments, we are going to approve.
We will be taking action, so we will be returning from executive, executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.